The Akama County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative record vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.1-3771b of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore being resolved that Akama County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May I have roll call?
Mr. Spadell?
Present.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Ms. Handish?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. White?
Present.
Ms. Taylor?
Present.
Dr. Met?
Here.
We will now stand for the pledge. There's a flag over there. A pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time for the school reports.
Wonderful. Moving on. There we go. Alright, thank you very much. Appreciate you joining us today. Ms. O'Shea, Principal Arcadia High School. I have a couple of guest speakers that I'll let speak before. I was hoping Ms. Justice and her students would come in so we could recognize them. They're the ones that prepared your meal today. They do a phenomenal job for us, but it's also a little late, so some of them might have had riots waiting and, you know, we told them we wrapped up around seven. So, it is what it is. But I do have a group of students here and I have a parent and I have a teacher who are going to kind of speak about their experiences here at Arcadia. The first two I'd like to introduce is Jacob Delgado and Ethan Sacks, the members of our NNDCC program, and they're both getting ready to prepare for their trip to Hawaii and representing us in District Three with their classmates in the Pearl Harbor Memorial Day Parade. But gentlemen, if you'd like to come join us?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. I would like to start by saying thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak here in front of all of you wonderful people. I am Cadet Sacks and this is Cadet Delgado. Today, we're mostly going to be talking about our own experiences in NNDCC and what it means to us. The NNDC program is a program that allows kids to learn in a fun and safe environment and also allows them to learn discipline. Believe it or not, the main goal of the NNDCC program is not to push kids towards the military branches, but instead teach them discipline and teach them respect and helps them develop leadership skills. Personally, I like the way we learn in NNDCC because we learn with hands-on activities, which requires more research and helps us dive deeper into the subject at hand. Just last week, we made cardboard boats and they had to be accurate to real commissioned ships. Not totally accurate because, you know, cardboard ships can't be totally accurate. That's kind of hard. But we made boats based on real life ones and so the boats were made from tape and cardboard. So luckily, that's not what the actual ships are made out of. But they had to float, which was one of the things. We also had to do a presentation for it where we named our ship based off the real ship. Mine was the USS Ford Gerald, our Gerald Ford. And it floated luckily and it didn't sink. And yeah, so I'm going to move this to Cadet Delgado now.
Again, I want to thank you for letting me have the chance to speak here today. With my personal experience in NNDCC, I have family members that have done it and since they've done it in places that have done it throughout the years and had not have started like how we have. It is only NNDCC right now because we don't have as much people as we do, but I feel, but the recommendation for RGC to be a thing is having a hundred cadets. And I feel like in the future that this program can be something worth that and with the right leadership and us working as a group individually and helping each other build up and support each other to a good goal, I feel like that would help us a lot. And I feel like with my personal opinion, I think this is a great opportunity to not only show kids that it is good to be disciplined and it's good to show like, show respect to just not only us, but others too, and just to help build us up and stuff like that. Alright, back to you.
Okay. So again, I want to thank you guys for allowing us to have this opportunity to tell you a little bit about the program. And have a good night, guys. Hope the best for you. And yeah, we're done with the speakers.
Are you coming in, Ms. Justice? No. I bragged on you a second ago. You guys weren't here yet. I told you, the kids are getting ready to go. But that is Ms. Justice. She does do a great job for us. Thank you. Have a good evening. Bye, Avery. Alright, next I have a parent, Ms. Velasquez. She has two sons here at Arcadia High School. They're both seniors and both enrolled in our Badger Technical Programs. One son, Jonathan, is down at the HVAC program and Lisandro is here in our welding program. So I've invited her to come up this evening and speak for a few minutes about her son's experiences over the last few years.
Well, my name is Amy Velasquez and I'm very grateful to be here and tell you that this is my, you know, my boys' last year. That one is in welding, which is Lisandro, and he is doing awesome job and it's encouraged him to have good grades to stay in the Badger. And also it's, he is very excited because the teacher is helping him to be into another, to prolong his master's in welder. He enjoys it and I hope you guys keep these programs and maybe add a couple more programs, like maybe electrician and stuff. Cause my other son, Jonathan, who, he took a year off of school. He had an IP, he has some issues, and he took a year off of school. And he went from ninth grade, pretty much excelled and went back and now he's going to graduate this year. So he really jumped a couple and he was able to get into the Badger Program too. And they did, unfortunately, you guys don't have electrician, so he went to the next best thing, which was HVAC. And he is enjoying it and he wants to go into the military after this. So he wants to go through the military and go get electrician. But he does still want to keep his HVAC. And he is enjoying it too and it's gave him something to keep himself going. Cause he had a little bit more issues. He's a very special, unique young man. He enjoys it and I hope you guys keep this program for children's more. I mean, I have siblings who have graduated from Arcadia High School and who is, actually works in the community. She graduated four years ago? No, now it's been six. Six years ago and she graduated as a nursing assistant from Arcadia High School. And her name is Amelia Velasquez. And she also now works in actually a dentist office right here in Park City, Virginia. So this, I mean, this program is awesome and it helps them a lot to perceive what they want needs. And the teachers are really nice too. So thank you and I'm very, I don't know what else to say, but thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now, last but not least, I have Mr. Herbert Dracula. He's one of our international teachers who's been with us for three years. He signed an extension to stay two more years, but there's some stipulations with that that he's trying to work out with me. But he's in our math department. So he teaches some math courses and this year he's got certified to teach the dual enrollment courses through the community college as well. So he's been able to teach a number of math classes for us. But he's a valuable member of our department and I'd like him to come speak on behalf of our faculty.
Good morning, everyone. Ah, I think it's good morning. Okay. To the members of the Akama County School Board headed by Ms. Janet Turner. To the members of the Akama County's public schools headed by our, supervised by our RUL interim superintendent, David Cech. RHS principal, Ms. O'Shea. Teachers, guests, parents, staff, my dear students, Jacob Ethan. Good evening, everyone. Mabuhayat Maganang Gabi. That's how we greet in the Philippines. Alright, first of all, let me summon all my courage in front of you all and let me just apologize in advance for stuttering. Ethan, I take note of what you said earlier to speak slowly. This is my first time delivering a speech like this in front of distinguished guests like you guys are. So thank you very much for the opportunity, Ms. O'Shea. And actually, I know that this session is being livestreamed, so that's why I send the link to my folks back in the Philippines. Because it's really a proud moment for me standing in front of all you guys here. Okay, I had the, under high, high heart rate. Sorry. Alright. Okay, let me introduce myself once again. My name is Mr. Herbert M. Dracula. My students and my colleagues here in the HHS call me Mr. Herbert. I am one of the eleven international teachers here assigned in HHS, but I believe we have lots of Filipino teachers assigned across the county. Been teaching twenty years, seventeen years back in the Philippines, three years here in Arcadia High School. And thank you again, HHS and ACPS for granting me to extend for another two years teaching here in the United States. If not for Mr. O'Shea, I would not be standing here in front of you, but I want to beg off, but he's, he's the guy here. So that's why I, I believe. Okay, let me start off, actually that's only the introduction. This is the speech in itself. I'm so sorry.
You're good. Take all my time.
Alright. Let me start off my speech with our school's tagline, which is, "It's always a great day to be a Firebird." That's our school tagline. But is it or is it not? Let me take you back to your 2022 month of September. Moving to a new country, adjusting to a new culture, and stepping into a completely new classroom environment, were all huge hurdles for me. Coming from the Philippines, eighty-six hundred miles across the Pacific Ocean, reflecting on my journey as an international teacher, I can't help but think about how challenging the beginning was. When I say challenging, it is really challenging. I mean, we have different set of learners back from Asia, Philippines in particular, adjusting to the community itself, school, and the place itself. But I do love the Eastern Shore, very chill, very relaxed. But despite all of these challenges, let me just tell you, school board and the rest of the people here in listening, I can say with absolute certainty that it has been one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. From the very first day, the support that I received from Arcadia High School was nothing short of remarkable, most especially coming from my dear administrators. The culture here is one of inclusion, collaboration, and understanding. The administrators, the staff, and my co-teachers have all been incredible, always ready to lend a helping hand or offer guidance whenever we, whenever needed, especially for us international teachers. Second page. They have not only made the transition for us easier, but have created an environment where I, together with other international teachers, feel valued and supported every single day. I can still remember as a new teacher, my colleague would always visit me inside my classroom and often ask me how my day went. I can still remember Ms. Sarah, our property custodian, she already retired. She often drops by my room and asks me about my classroom stories and then she will tell her stories as well. I know Ms. Nadine is listening right now. She told me a while ago this morning that she'll be listening through the radio and she will listen to my speech. Shout out to Ms. Nadine. Thank you very much. You're a friend in the building. And of course, Mr. O'Shea and also Ms. Cody. They entrusted me with teaching the dual enrollment classes. That's a big, big deal for me. Because teaching and connecting with, connecting me with the Eastern Shore Community College to teach, grade twelve students with college statistics, quantitative reasoning, higher mathematics, and it means really a lot to me that they put big trust on me and my abilities. And then they would want me to grow professionally. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
And Ms. Karen Taylor. Ms. Karen Taylor, thank you. And then of course, there are the students. Jacob, Ethan. They're my geometry students. As I say, every day is a new adventure. Every day is a new day dealing with students here. At times, you will encounter them really motivated and at times, needed them to get focused. But other than that, I should say, I can still remember Mr. O'Shea telling us, non-verbatim, and it goes like this. As much as we need to deliver the content and target our objectives, we need to get to know our students and relate to them. That's non-verbatim. I just put it into my words. These words have stuck into my mind, to my head, because they remind me of, teaching is not just about delivering your lessons, finding those X and Y's, knowing those lines are parallel or not, or perpendicular. It's all about connecting to their students. For me, understanding their individual stories and sometimes being that one person that they feel comfortable talking to, you might not know that you're making a difference with that one student. And I believe that I've pretty much done that here in the building. I get to have those students who are like, if everyone is being noisy, then I have those kinds of students, "Quiet, Mr. Bird. You're stalking." It's like that. So I'm very much grateful to the kinds of students that I have here in HHS. We have lots of problems here and there, but we were able to manage this problem. Last paragraph. I feel incredibly fortunate to be here in the ACPS. Thank you very much, school board, and Akama County Public Schools, and most especially, Arcadia High School. I've heard unlike from, unlike from the stories that I've heard from my other peers, Filipino colleagues who were assigned in North Carolina, Florida, South Carolina, I've been hearing horrible stories coming from them with the work environment and the kind of students that I have. So that's why I really, really, really feel lucky that I am here assigned in the Eastern Shore, particularly in HHS. So thank you very much once again. Here in ACPS, it has been one of warm support and collaboration. The environment in this institution has truly been a home away from home. And for that, I am eternally grateful to all of you. I also want to express my deepest thanks to the ACPS, the school board, for bringing us over here in the US. It really means a lot to us, especially as Filipino teachers. Yes, financially, you'll help us, but most definitely it's like professional growth and development for us. And after the five years that I will be having here in the United States, I'll go back to my country and then I'll tell them great experiences that I have here in Akama County Public Schools, public school. Now, let me go back to the question that I posted on the onset of my speech. Is it always a great day to be a Firebird? Hmm.
Absolutely.
I can truly say that every day I spend here, working with such incredible people and students, it is indeed always a great day to be a Firebird. On behalf of all the international teachers, eleven of us here to be exact in HHS, thank you very much and God bless you all.
Can I get a time check? How much time we got?
Ms. O'Shea?
Yes, sir.
Can I just interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
I just want to say that I've had numerous students reach out to me and have done some excellent, excellent report about you, sir. You are an excellent teacher. And I just want to say personally, I want to thank you.
We're so glad you're here. We're lucky to have you. Thank you.
I told you, Mr. Bird. Alright, so that's a tough act to follow. I don't have prepared remarks like that. And certainly, he is one of our valued teachers, just like all of the faculty here. But we do have, we take pride in the fact that we have eleven international teachers. We have a very diverse student population. If you guys have remembered from the last time that I presented, our population is a third, a third, a third, more or less down the board between our black, white, and Hispanic students. You know, and we want, we think it's important that our, our teaching, staff, our faculty is just as diverse as our student population. Because in the real world, that's what we, you know, we look forward to is living and being with diverse folks. So we're very happy with the, the things that our international teachers bring to the table, not only for just broadening the horizons of our students, but just their experiences from other places and bringing that to the Eastern Shore. So we sort of do appreciate Mr. Bird and all of his colleagues and the things they do. Also, if you look at our demographics real quick, we're still sitting right around six ninety-one, largest high school in Akama County. The one thing that I do want to point out is this year, our English language learners have surpassed our special education students last year. Remember, that number is exactly the same. And that's kind of important because we'll get into the, a couple slides later, where we have some statistics on how many of our EL students showed growth last year and even tested out of EL, which is a big deal and a testament to the work that the three EL teachers I have here at Arcadia do. There we go. Go back, I'm sorry. Alright, so the top number is our data from last year and then the bottom number is this year's data. Two things I want to kind of point out. If you look at our English, not our, all of our alternative assessments have not been recorded yet. So last year, if our students struggled to pass the reading and writing SOL, they can take the work keys. And then those can count as an alternative assessment. That is, numbers are not included in that seventy-three percent. But I think we had everybody but two kids pass that last year. So that number should be upwards of like ninety-five percent for overall pass rate for English. You can see we showed growth in math. You can see what we did in science. You can see what we did in history. Last year, science was in the red and we did an R-ten, which has reduced the failure rate by ten percent. We actually reduced it by maybe like twenty-two, twenty-four percent. So this year, our goal, being in Level Two, we had to write a school improvement plan for that, or a school improvement goal. But our goals have reached the benchmark. We've done some things on our end. I don't want to get to the details just because of my time limit, but we do have a strategy in place that we should get to seventy percent if not higher this year, which will hopefully put us in the green for every single one of our accreditation categories. It's all we did with history. History is not necessarily an accreditation standard at the state level, but showed tremendous growth there. And that's really a testament to the work that Mr. Marklin's doing with our World Geography and our ninth grade students, trying to prioritize getting those kids that Social Studies or the History SOL in ninth grade and not letting them go into those other classes and then continually fail at the end of course SOL until they get that World Geography one. If you look down the bottom there, our graduation, dropout, chronic absenteeism, and the CCRI. Our CCRI has not been updated yet. We had to make another submission like we did the previous year, so that should be higher as well. But you can see what we did with chronic absenteeism. We dropped that in the last two years. We've dropped it quite significantly. The dropout rate is again, you know, is acceptable, not the best, but acceptable. And, you know, as we mentioned, maybe we didn't mention it yet. It's in another slide. But we were recognized by the state board for, you know, our continuous improvement. That's reflected in our data. Also, moving on, areas of improvement, and I kind of added more like sustainability. So if you look at 2022 up to where we are in 2024, 2025 school, you can see where we got the growth across all of our areas. Pretty self-explanatory, just kind of spelling out what I just previously showed you. But just the green ones there, you can see those kinds of significant growth, you know, or reduction in failure rates. Couple things, what's going on, more like what's not going on. We've got something going on. Our Beta Club just came back. We had fourteen students represent us. We won another leadership representative role, Jonathan Tebow, who's replacing a previous student who was in that role. So they're working towards preparing themselves for the national convention. Always a great honor. Last year, we hosted the Region Two A Track Championship. We have fifteen teams from Region Two A come here. We hosted that, which was a huge event. And we're very successful in doing that. Very pleased. Theater Fest, Angel Villator Perez won Best Actor. Cameron Taylor was nominated for Best Actor, which is a big honor for some of the fifteen schools that were in the superregional. We had the, you know, the kid that was voted Best Actor. So I'm really proud of those guys. We had free, wrapped up Free College Application Week. We had a hundred and twenty-five applications filled out by our seniors. Kind of made a big push, set up some tables and some computers and had our representatives from the community college working with our guidance department to try to get as many of these seniors to fill out those applications while they were free. Gear Up is something. Works with our tenth grade students. Mr. Sabatino spearheads that on our end with Ms. Cody. But though, so far this year, they've taken a lot of opportunity in a short amount of time to visit the Spaceport Launch Pad. We've had some college visits specialized specifically for our students with disabilities. And then we also participate in the Career Venture Day down at Eastern Shore Community College. So again, trying to give these kids a look at what opportunities they have available to them, whether they decide to stay on the Eastern Shore or if they decide to venture off the Eastern Shore. So starting to have these kids thinking about what's next in their life. I mentioned that we were recognized by the Board of Ed for our continuous improvement, which is always a nice recognition. Talk about our EL students. So seventy-nine percent, eighty percent of our students showed growth last year and eighteen, nineteen percent of our EL students exited out of the program. And that's really a testament of the work that Ms. Ellenberger, Ms. Garbeck, and Ms. Schwartz do with our students. So having just as many, if not more, EL students as we do with the special ed population. I have three teachers who do a lot of that work, whereas on the special ed side, I think we have eight or nine teachers. So they really do earn their money. I'm very proud of them. Our NDC, NNDCC cadets are prepared for the trip for Pearl Harbor. They leave tomorrow. We wish them safe travels. But that's also a great honor for them to participate in the Pearl Harbor Remembrance Parade. It's a big opportunity for them to represent Akama County as a whole, because that group is made up of students from other high schools, not just Arcadia High School. So we're excited for them to have that experience. Three of our students, if you guys follow us on Facebook, you saw three of our students who are in a nursing program were nominated for the Congress Future Medical Leaders Award, which is a big deal. So Cameron Taylor and I, Edwards and Stephanie Ortiz Ortiz are three of our students who received that recognition and were invited to participate in this next adventure. And then, just to brag on my son a little bit, I usually don't talk about my own children, just because I don't, I think it's kind of tacky, but my son Aaron O'Shea is a senior. He's worked very hard, so I'm going to give a little bit of props here. He did represent Arcadia High School at the VHSL Tracks or Cross Country Championships over at Virginia Tech, came in twenty-first place. He's also a district champion and the regional runner-up. And he owns the five K record at Arcadia High School and also the mile record at Arcadia High School, which he's looking to best this year. So good job, son. Appreciate it. All your hard work. Love you. Alright, let's see. Alright, what's new-ish? Sometimes when you do new things all the time, you run out of new ideas. So right now, we've kind of been a holding pattern because some of our stuff's working. We do have a strong and robust presence on social media. We've added Instagram. So if you're not following us, please follow us and like us. There's lots of information out there about what's going on here at Arcadia High School and what our kids are doing. We do have our Firebird Spotlight that Mr. Hardit is continuing to work on, where he's highlighting alumni and posting them on the wall so the kids can see, you know, successful folks who graduated from Arcadia High School and walk the halls and maybe give them some motivation and aspirations to be the next person to end up on the wall. We do have, are still doing our perfect attendance recognition because chronic absenteeism is something we're constantly struggling with and make sure these kids come to school on every day. So we do offer our two dollar off wooden nickels and then I put stickers on your desk to show you. We've also decided this year to add some stickers so the kids can, who are coming, you know, month to month, they can stack them up like medallions. We just got done recognizing our October folk, our September, October. We had a hundred and twenty kids with perfect attendance for the first quarter and they will also be recognized. We're trying to call out a hundred and twenty kids during middle of the school day without being too disruptive. It's kind of a challenge. We have to pick and choose our times. You know, and if you, again, follow us on social media, you saw all of our stuff right before the break. And then just some pictures of things that are making it a great day to be a Firebird. The three ladies in the Hawaiian shirts that are really fashionable. I know Envy is green. That's my EL department. They do a phenomenal job. But there's some pictures of some of our Colony Arts kids, the kids that get ready to go to the FCA camp, our welders. We had a gentleman who's in a Badger welding program. He's from Managua. Austin Work, he, the MGF competition, went down there, won first place, which is a huge accomplishment. Very proud of him. He also had an interview with the apprenticeship, no, not the apprentice, with the apprentice school last week. So we're hoping he gets in for them. We've got three kids who are, who have applied and have interviews. So that's exciting for our program of, you know, fifteen kids, ten kids, the three of them are getting a chance to go to the apprentice school. So, I don't know. Pretty good stuff. Anyone got any questions?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
What is your son's time in the five K?
Oh, it is his record or on that race? His record, it's like sixteen forty, no, he's running fifteens, sixteen forty-eight, sixteen thirty-eight, sixteen, I don't know, I'll have to get back to you.
Very fast.
His mile is, his mile is four thirty-eight right now. So he wants to get that down to the four twenties this year. Yeah. He's fast. It's effortless. He has a build like his mother, not his father. Different weight class. Anyone have any questions?
All good news.
Thank you. It's always a great day to be a Firebird. We always got good news. We have our challenges, but we certainly meet them. We've got a great staff. They step up, they do the jobs. Very, very fortunate.
No, I still have my sticker.
I know, I ran out of those. I gotta get some more.
I was hoping that there might be a new sticker.
Yeah, there is. It's a perfect attendance one. So come to every meeting, we'll get another one. Yeah, we gotta get some more of those. Those went away very quickly. Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Alright, thanks for doing. Appreciate it.
Next up is the approval for the minutes from the eleven nineteen twenty twenty-four meeting.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes for the eleven nineteen twenty twenty-four meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The minutes are closed. And may I have a motion on the And may I have a motion on the long-term suspensions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the long-term suspensions as presented, for twelve oh three, twenty-four oh one, for two oh three.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Is there a motion for the personnel list?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel list as presented.
Second. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, personnel list is approved, we'll come back to the property. We'll do that in the second closing session. Is there an update, Mr. Bennett, on the Little League?
Well, Little League, yes. I think I got a couple of updates, I'm gonna be really quick, I think, anything I don't cover, I think Ms. O'Leary will cover. Update on Little League, I did receive the final requested information today from Ms. Lewis, I've sent it to you, so it can be reviewed, I've let her know that we've received. So we've got everything that we've requested there, so just go from there. I think I'm also just giving an update on the two gyms. I think I told you it's November twelfth. We got the information back on the sixty-five percent design. Pugati Government's original estimate was two-point-seven-two million, at sixty-five percent design, it came in at over three million. Same for Nandua, Nandua original estimated budget was two-point-six million, it came in at two-point-eight-four million. So, there is...
And I thought we moved to a different route as to reduce the cost.
We did, but there were some things they missed on the systems, was a big part of it. They underpised the systems badly, and that's the bulk of it. I'm not really concerned right now with this overage, because there's some stuff between here and a hundred percent that I think we can draw back on. My goal is to get it back to the original or below the original estimate. So it means we will be taking some stuff away from it, that it's more like window dressing time, not gonna sacrifice the program that will be supported by it, but we will kind of cut back on some of the stuff that they added to this budget, and we look for some creative ways to get the project where it needs to be, but just once. So that's where I'm at on those two, I've got a meeting with them later this week, virtual meetings, just kind of give them some of my ideas for them to look at different things that we can go back to and kind of see where we could save money. I've made it really clear, but I'm disappointed that the numbers came in higher than they should have, so I'll work with that. That said, Thursday this week, two o'clock, that seal bid's coming in for Acuña primary. So, hopefully Friday, there'll be some good news, maybe that Ms. O'Leary can put an email to all of you all. So I'm hoping that these bids come in favorable. I think, given that we had a lot of general contractors show up, the bids will be competitive, but it's, right now, it's just, it's a crapshoot out there on what numbers are coming in, and everybody keeps talking about this eastern full, Eastern Shore factor, and, you know, like these two, go back to the gyms real quick, they put a hundred thousand dollar contingency on both of these based on Eastern Shore contingencies, because they're claiming that there's gonna be that much of a premium when the contractors come here to do the work, because they're traveling from either across the bay or from Salisbury. I've not seen that so far on some of the projects we've done, but since I've been here, we've not really done a big project, so, other than the roofs and everything, and I don't think we paid a premium on those, because, I mean, our bids were very competitive there. So, Thursday will be interesting, I'm sure we'll get information to you all pretty quickly there. What else was I supposed to talk about?
I think we've, the debate centers, but we can move that to after real estate? Exactly, I mean, because I, Bobby not talking, you have the information. I sent an email out.
Can you go here, because I'm having...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We can talk about the vape sensors when we talk about the real estate. I did send an email out later this afternoon, I don't know if everybody was able to get it or not.
I did not.
Okay. The original motion that spent the at-risk money, approved SSOs, and it actually approved the realis, the alt ed for the CSB building. So, that's, that's off the table, but it left more than enough money for the vape sensors that Bobby presented last time, but it was not included in the motion. So we would like a motion to move ahead with the vape sensors.
Are you sure?
I pulled it.
I mean, we can certainly vote on it again.
No, I pulled it, it, I haven't...
Okay. Because we, that came up, again and again and again?
On the motion on...
We, we'll do it again.
September seventeenth, on motion by Mr. Taylor, seconded in by Mr. Neal, the board approved to take the next step for the SSOs as well as the rental property as presented.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Halo vape detectors, so they go ahead and order them and get them in place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, just to follow up on that, I will say that I talked to them today, they have everything in stock, they will be ready to ship when I get them a PO, which I'll get them a PO tomorrow, so, then we'll just work on the installation part.
So you'll have the PO tomorrow and get moving on.
Yep. I'll have the PO in place tomorrow.
So we'll have it in before Christmas?
Well, they're not doing the install, they're going to install.
No, no, they're not doing the install, we're having the company that Jack bought, uses for most of our installs, all that type of stuff, they'll, it's absolute, I think, it's absolute security, they'll pull out the wire, so, installs figured, and we've already got that number included as well.
So when do you think the install will take place?
I...
I know it depends on when we get them in, but I'm saying...
I have them pretty quick. I sent Jack an email late this afternoon to see if he could touch base with Scott and see what we get. I would love to talk to the people with Halo tomorrow, and see that they're gonna be here, say, maybe next week, and try to set up to begin installation over winter break. That's my goal. Now, whether I can make that happen, I'm not sure, but that's what I'm gonna shoot for right now, but I'll know more tomorrow.
You said Christmas break, or?
Winter break.
Okay.
Yep. I think that's all I've got, thank you all.
Thank you.
Item seven point oh one, title two.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm presenting the Title II Part A Grant, which is titled Preparing, Training, and Recruiting High Quality Teachers and Principals. This grant is a federal-funded grant that supports programs to increase academic achievement by increasing the number of properly licensed and endorsed teachers, principals, and assistant principals. Some of the highlights of the grant include funding for our full-time teacher mentor, funding for our full-time special education teacher mentor, funding for part-time teacher mentors, who are mostly retired teachers, our new teacher academy that we have every year, incentive bonuses for teachers who become properly licensed and endorsed on time, tuition assistance for special education teachers seeking a conditional license, and to tuition assistance for teachers in the I Teach program. These are all items that were similar in last year's Title II presentation, but not exactly the same. Some of the funding is a little bit different, so, but it's very similar. Do you have any questions?
The, the first bullet point with full-time teacher mentor, is that someone, is that a position that we already have, or are you adding a new position?
No, it's a position we already have. Yeah, and it's been in the grant for a number of years.
I see, I see, thank you.
Any questions?
She asked my question, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Ferguson and Ms. Farrell, are you gonna talk about our, our many options of school calendars?
We are.
Good evening, everyone. I believe everyone has the calendar options on Board Docs, but we also have a folder here for you that contains, contains the options, some breakdown information that explains them, and also you'll have a sheet that we put together that explains the timeline and everything that's taken place so far, and then I'll share the next steps. So to begin, we have met with a variety of stakeholder committees to include building administrators, our instructional team, cabinet members, which is our leadership team. We've also met with three stakeholder committees to include teacher representatives, parent representatives, and community representatives. Some takeaways from those various meetings, one fact is that the reason we've presented two calendars to you that start pre-Labor Day and two that start post-Labor Day, one of the reasons behind that is because, except for Chesapeake Public Schools, Acuña County is the only school besides them that starts after Labor Day, and that includes our neighbors to the north, our neighbors to the south, North Hampton, and also our private schools in the local area. When we met with these variety of stakeholder groups, there was not one consensus. As we know, with this kind of thing, it's very difficult to, to, you satisfy one person and it doesn't satisfy the next person. So that's why we tried to give a variety of options. This is not finalized yet, so keep that in mind. When we met with the building administrators, many of them were in favor of beginning pre-Labor Day, and it has to do with a variety of things that Ms. Ferguson's gonna talk about, one having to do with testing before the holidays. Teachers, it was a mix, and then when we met, when we met with community and parent members, the majority of the community members that we met with were in favor of starting school after Labor Day. A lot of their concerns were about local businesses and things like that, young students that work in businesses and things. So what Ms. Ferguson's gonna do is she's gonna just summarize briefly the highlights of each of the four choices, and then I'll follow up with next steps.
Okay, so you guys also got in your packet kind of the plan of where we started and how we got to where we are, so that's also in your packet. So if you look at the calendars, there are four of them, and I'm just gonna basically highlight some of the things with the calendars. Number one, yes...
Can we put the public content up on the screen?
That's a Greta thing.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm all for it, yes, thank you. Greta does magic. So this is basically what I'm gonna highlight, these are the differences between them. I will say that the Christmas, the winter break, and the Thanksgiving break are the same on all four, because that was the first thing that everybody looked at, so they are the same on all four of them. The first day of school for the teachers on Calendar A and Calendar B is August thirteenth, on Calendar C and D it's August twenty-eighth. On the open houses would be the twenty-first on Calendar A and B, and the twenty-eighth on Calendar C and D. The first day of school for the kids on Calendar A and B would be August twenty-fifth, which is that week before Labor Day, and then we would have off that Friday of Labor Day on those two calendars. On Calendar C and D, we would still have off that Friday before Labor Day like we did this year, but the students would start on Tuesday after Labor Day on Calendar C and D. The last day of school, that's the other thing they looked at, when's the last day of school? On Calendar A, it's June ninth, on Calendar B, it's June tenth, on Calendar C, it's June fifteenth, and on Calendar D, it's June sixteenth. So the other difference is, on Calendar A, the spring break is before Easter, and so it goes into that Easter weekend, but we also have kind of like a fall break in March, and we have a, or in October, and then kind of like a mid-break in, in March. And the thing that we looked at with those is we looked at teacher absenteeism and student absenteeism with October, and that's why we picked that weekend in October. On Calendar B, spring break is in March, and then you have the Friday and Monday before and after Easter. Calendar C, the spring break is only before Easter, and then that Monday, and then on the last one, Calendar D, March, you've got the March break, and then before and after Easter. And then, if you go on to, for the public that's listening, if you go onto Board Docs, you can see these calendars as well. So one of the things that came up was about testing, which is what I love. So the thing that we have with testing is, the state gives us a window, and says that you must test between this point and this point. How we choose to put those tests in that window, we have flexibility. So if we started before Labor Day, we could alter the testing because we've got that window. So if some of the subjects wanted to test before spring, before we left for Christmas, and then come back and do remediation, and the kids could do retakes after we come back from the winter break, that is totally possible. So we have the flexibility to do that, we just work together to come up with the best schedule for all of our students. And speaking of testing, our test for grades three through eight starts next week on December ninth, and I emailed all of you guys out of the calendar. And Katie's gonna wrap us up.
Thanks, Kim. And one thing we did after we met with the stakeholder groups, we came back together, like I said, as the instructional team, and we did, I sat and read every single feedback to the teams, and we started to play with the calendars a little bit, and let's say, well, let's see if we can accommodate this person, and what ended up happening, for the most part, is when we tried to start accommodating one, Calendar A started looking like Calendar B, or Calendar C started turning into Calendar D. So what we wanted to do as next steps is share these with your team, get your feedback, you know, you're welcome to email me tomorrow, talk about it tonight, email me your thoughts, and then we will come back as a team and look at all of the feedback that we've gotten from this team and the other teams. And then our next steps, our plan is to work on a survey to the school, we invite any parents and family members that would like to come speak and public comment at our next meeting, if they wanna share their feedback, thoughts about this, and then come back to this team in the January meeting for approval of one of the calendars. Any questions for Ms. Ferguson or I?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a question. So for the four days that we start before Labor Day on A and B, wouldn't that just be pretty much the students getting used to it? Like, we still do our home rooms and stuff like that, so our blocks are significantly shorter, about like ten, fifteen minutes. So, as somebody who's in the school, I don't see, like, I don't see much progression with the four days before, and even when we do tests, for, like, when we do tests, coming back and doing remediation after break would be really hard on the students, because we go home, open Christmas gifts, all that stuff, it's just really hard on the students.
Right, and that's why the suggestion came up about testing, that you would actually take your SOL test before you left for the winter break. So if you had to take an algebra test, you would take that in December, and then when you came back in January, instead of that crunch, 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 we got four days, hurry up, let's remember everything, 'cause we forgot it over the break, exactly like you're saying, it would just be working with the students in the smaller groups who didn't pass their SOL and working on them. And then the algebra students who did pass would be working on enrichment activities to get them ready for their next course. So that's kind of where that thinking was, but, yeah, it, the first day of school, all the things that you do on the normal first day of school, you would do just a little bit before Labor Day, on the Calendar A and B.
And remember, we are on a day calendar, not hour, hour calendar, so like she's saying, it would be the same thing, you're just shifting it. And a couple of other things we considered when these calendars were built, was feedback from last year, and like Ms. Ferguson said, we see a rise in absenteeism and discipline in October and March, that's where we tried to build, in some of these calendars, you'll see, especially with discipline, we tried to put in a few breaks, because that was some recommendations last year.
The other thing I wanna add in, is speaking of that, was Virtual Virginia, because the Virtual Virginia schedule is a little bit off-kilter from ours, and so the new kids going in second semester are actually finishing our schedule and starting Virtual Virginia. So that would be the other thing with our students on the Virtual Virginia calendar, they would start, theirs would be a little bit more aligned with our schedule as well.
I just had a question. I recall, probably in May or June, that we had a discussion about graduation being on Saturdays, so that parents wouldn't have to split up their days and times to try to get to everybody's graduation, but I see that that's not on here.
And we had that, and Ms. Taylor can jump in if I'm saying this incorrectly, but we had it on this year, and I know there was a lot of feedback from the public that they were not happy about that, and that's why we went back, because we were planning to do that this year. and that's why we went back, because we were planning to do that this year. And there was a significant amount of feedback that that was not convenient for families and travel and various reasons.
Got another question here. Go ahead.
I'm not just, I'm gonna, like, I promise I'm not gonna go on our...
No, we want you to ask questions.
Good.
For dual enrollment, because I do dual enrollment, and there's gonna be plenty of people after me who do dual enrollment. So would dual enrollment be significantly affected by these calendars? Like, because I know I still have assignments due that are on Christmas break. So would we be working with the community college?
We would be working with the community college, and actually, the community college starts a little bit before we do, so that would align us a little bit more with them as well. And that was one of the, the input that we got, was that the dual enrollment is a little bit off. The kids who are doing the virtual classes during the day is a little bit off, and that's why we tried to take all of that into account. I mean, there's no calendar that we're gonna make that's gonna please everybody. But hopefully, between the four, we're gonna find a happy medium.
Speaking from a mom's standpoint who has a child in college, I've learned, remember this Thanksgiving break, there are no breaks in college, so you're gonna experience that with your dual enrollment regardless.
Any other questions?
So in Ms. Ferguson's scenario, where the students are, can take their algebra SOL before they leave for winter break, they will have met their one hundred and forty seat hour requirement?
They would still have the hours afterwards, that that hundred and forty seat hours is for them to finish the course. So even now, we take the SOL in late May or beginning of June, and they still have time after it. It would be the same kind of thing. They would still have to complete the seat hours in order to get the verified credit. So, yeah, taking the SOL, that's only one entity of it. They still have to meet those seat hours.
Like in elementary, we take the SOL May, and then we have two, three weeks left. And as a classroom teacher, I would either be remediating or enriching, preparing for next year. So there's still the instruction piece taking place.
Yeah, it's still gonna take place. Right.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing from anybody that has any input. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So when we discuss the calendar, a lot of those...
After, they're gonna send out a survey, and I guess when they come back with the survey results.
Madam Chair, I move that the board should convene in a closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Code of Virginia. Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A two for discussion and consideration of students pursuing a GED. Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A eight, consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matter requiring provision of legal advice to an existing lease agreement. And I believe that's it.
That's it. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're now in a closed session.